Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, so, next order of business on tonight is adjourned public hearing, appeal number 22772, area variance, Alpine Commons, multifamily workforce housing, seeking an area variance section 240-37 and 240-81.7 of district regulations in an SC zoning district where a maximum of 48 dwelling units is allowed. The applicant is proposing 144 dwelling units, thus requesting a variance for an increase in the density for mixed uses to allow for 96 additional dwelling units to be constructed. Where 2.5 stories or 35 feet maximum building height is allowed, the applicant has requested an increase of 3.5 stories or 50 feet building height, thus requesting a variance of one story and/or 15 feet in building height. The property is located at 1404 Route 9 and is identified as tax grid number 615702707773 in the town of Wapanger, lead agency January 31, 2023. I have a motion to open up the adjourned public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. So, I'm sure there's somebody here tonight speaking on behalf of this application. Could you please state your adieu for the record there, please?
Sure. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Neil Alexander, a partner at the law firm of Cuddy and Fader here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me from the applicant Dakota Partners is Brian Donato, who's over to my right. So we were last here with you in August, and we subsequently made a submission to you at the end of September, providing additional materials consistent with the comments that were made during that public hearing. They really, they were added.
Sure. Excuse me. What's that? Can't hear? Raising the mic.
So we made a supplemental submission, which, as you know, be put up on the website, and also all the materials from that have been at the FTP that we created that's been accessible to the public and the password, and username for that has always been in our cover letters for several months now. I think where we are at this juncture is we believe we have a complete and full record, and we've addressed all your concerns and issues to the fullest of our abilities. Obviously, the public wants to, you know, or needs to have an opportunity to address what has been newly presented, and we feel that the comments should probably be hemmed a little bit by that. We understand that some people may not have been able to get to the August meeting and therefore may feel the need to reiterate what was previously said, but if we could sort of focus a little bit more on the newer information, I think that would be great. It was additional information on the visual, notwithstanding, and obviously, we put a whole bunch of precatory language in our letter about, you know, the scope of secret not being an economic statute, but we did also provide tax information as to valuations of the property and how it's lost over $10 million in valuation over the past several years, and that was included in there in response to a question that had been asked by you all. We're trying to give you the, you know, answers to your questions, even if somewhat outside the scope of what, you know, of what the public has brought into view, and just be responsive, you know, if it's publicly available information, even if it isn't necessarily germane to your decision-making, we might as well share it. So we're trying to be transparent in that fashion, and I think that pretty much goes over where we are, for, at least for, at this juncture, because it sounds like there, given that a few people were having trouble hearing me, there are a few people who also have something they want to say this evening. So we'll gladly listen and look forward to coming back at the end of the evening.
Yeah, we'll open up for questions from the floor in a couple minutes. But just, you know, Mr. Barr here, he had written an email. You can't hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I don't know if that-
I don't know if these actually make it louder, right? It's just for the TV.
Yeah, I guess I have to talk a little louder. I don't think this helps you folks. It helps the TV, but I'll try to talk a little louder. But, I think we got it. So, at any rate, I'm going to open up the floor for questions in a short, in a short period of time, but, you know, Mr. Barr had written an email, right, and it went several questions on it. I don't believe we got a response from you guys on those questions.
I believe you did. His email was submitted on September 12, and our submission came in on September 21, and they directly addressed his questions. I just didn't do italics answer, italics answer, but all those materials have been answered. You know, if I look at those questions, we gave you new visuals, which was this first bullet, and we gave you, the EAF talks about the limit, and our previously submitted engineering drawings also show the limits of disturbance and the total area to be cleared. That's been identified in our-
Yeah, so, I mean, one of the things we'd like to see is just a complete zoning site plan, which we've never received.
You have, you have that.
That shows the areas of all the commercial, the required parking for the commercial, the new areas, the areas being counted within. There's been varying levels of diagrams around?
No, you have, you have fully engineered drawings. It's been in exhibit 26 for several months now. You have fully engineered drawings, including grading and drainage, you have utility plans-
Can you bring it up on the TV?
Yeah. I mean, it's an 86-acre site. I can't put on one sheet. This has been at exhibit 26 for three of those.
So what portion of this site is being used, the hatched area, for the residential density calculations?
We gave that to you, and your building inspectors will find out that-
Yes, we have like five different diagrams. We're asking for a compiled zoning diagram.
You don't have five. First of all, go back to my June, my June 9th letter.
Okay, well, you just showed me a site plan that did not have the information I asked for on it, correct?
You have-
So show me, show me the plan that has that information, and I'll look at it.
I just told you, look at 26. It's all, it's four pages. Let's go, this is, you have the materials that have been given to you. Go back, now I gotta, you know, there are 40 exhibits here at the FTP.
The problem we've had since the first time you came in here is that, yeah, you've given us a live documentation, but not about the most-
We submitted this in November of 2022.
Would you please give me a moment to speak?
No, because there's a, there's an inherent problem.
Would you please give me a moment to speak here?
Hold on, one at a time.
One of the difficulties we've had is that you've given us a lot of information that's not necessarily relevant to the most important issue, which is the density. And it would be useful, we had the same issue in the last meeting, there is not clarity on the portions of the site.
Wait, let's, let's back up.
Neil, let him finish.
You're forgetting a really key factor here. You do not have original jurisdiction as a zoning board of appeals, correct? You do not have original jurisdiction as a zoning board of appeals. By statute, you have only appellate jurisdiction, correct? Correct?
So we're trying to make a secret determination and determination on your variances, and we've requested that information.
You just mixed apples and oranges. A secret determination has to do with environmental assessment. The density has to do with variances under, under your variance law.
Correct.
You can't do that. That's not fair. And what's also not fair that's going on here is we submitted in November of 2022, we were on three or four agendas before the calculation was questioned by you in May of this year.
Okay, I'm sorry it took me so long to find your incorrect math. I mean, like, is this really the point you're trying to make?
As a result, as a result of you questioning it, what did we say?
There's only one person in this room who can make that determination. It's the building inspector. Per New York state law, she is the original interpreter of the code. She said, "I need more information," because you requested it. We gave more information, and in a June 8 letter, the building inspector made an interpretation on June 9.
The reason it took us this amount of time was because of the lack of clarity in the originally submitted information.
But you don't have your thought, what's, what's happening here, and this is where I'm going, is on June 9, her letter and mine, Matt, crossed. We came to a meeting on June 27 or 29. I'd have to look up the exact date, and we all said, based on the information in those two letters, and agreed as to what the calculation was. We also had a meeting in July and agreed as to what the calculation was, and more importantly than anything, when the final determination was made in June, there's only 60 days to challenge that. No one challenged that. Now, never mind that I could have brought that issue up in May relative to the interpretation that occurred back at 93 dwelling units.
So I would like to see a zoning site plan that has all of these areas broken out in a very clear and precise way.
You were given that.
You have an architect. I'm an architect. This is what architects do all day. This is something you can put together and let us see.
You know what? Yeah, I was gonna, no.
It'd be wonderful if you could put it on the screen.
I think it would be useful to see this diagram.
And you're going to see it in a second, but the bottom line is, you don't have the authority to challenge it, period, outright. Building inspectors made a decision based on the information we submitted. More than 60 days went by. You don't have the authority to challenge it.
We can still see it.
Yes.
Okay.
Here, let me get you that. Here you go. It's not fair to rehash and retrade three times, and that's what you're asking to do.
I think that's what we did, right? That's what we did, from initial your application to now, a big difference. So what he's saying is 100% correct, that we did not have clarity, just going around and around, until he insisted I needed, he did not give the other plan. So don't tell him that we gave to you six months ago. You had changed it many times.
No, we have never changed it once.
You had changed it, and the calculation has changed.
We haven't changed it once, folks. We haven't changed it once. Let me just get my bearing.
There's been at least three different calculations given, and there's yet to be a compiled site plan.
So, that's not true.
Okay, okay, separate, separate question.
That's not true.
We have, we have a very large commercial parking lot, right?
And we-
So where's the diagram saying how many of those spaces-
How did our parking variance drop out then?
Because you changed the plan?
No, we didn't change the plan. We provided you with the Alta to show you how much parking was out there. The building inspector reviewed what we said and concurred that the parking variance was no longer necessary.
Because parking area was headed later on.
Folks, I really don't feel like this is a genuinely asked question.
Is, I would like to see how much of the site is still open for future development, because that weighs on my decision. So is that parking lot, do you need 100% of that parking lot for the commercial uses?
Okay, let's go back to-
And I feel like a site plan could very clearly show all of this information in one place, so I'm not looking at 30 memos that you've sent with little bits of information here and here.
It's not little bits here and there. That's denigrating and unnecessary. It's not even remotely accurate.
Let's do this, so, let's do this. So while you're looking for that plan, Neil, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up the floor for questions. You got it?
Hold on a second. You know, can you go to exhibit-
I'll have those questions answered.
Well, I wasn't even gonna go to that. I'd like to go back to exhibit 7.
Did you have to print out those questions?
Can you go back to exhibit 7 and put that up?
I'm gonna have my email somewhere.
This is my June 8 letter.
I don't.
This is where we showed you, oh yeah, you could also use that, that's true, you could, where you were going, which is when the six 17 acres, and it showed you the, the steep slopes, as well as all of that. It does, it's not coming across as anything other than a stall technique, that somehow we keep going over the same ask and the same amount of information, and your building inspector concurs with us, and then 60 days, or several months go by, and we wind up in the same place, where you're questioning that even though we have a stamped Alta at exhibit 8 and exhibit- Now, you got it up now? Fine.
So Neil, I think what Mr. Barr is asking for is slightly different, is what he, what he's saying is, he's talking about not particularly with respect to the density calculation for the area that's proposed for development. What he is looking for is the area on the balance of the property that might be available for future development.
But by inherent in the variance for density is there is no future development, right?
That was missed by the original math, not the revised calculation.
The way to do that, then, would be to impose a condition on the property that no future development is permitted.
Well, it's, but it's inherent. I can't, I would need to come back for another variance, right? So if you back all the way up, if that's the issue-
No, I mean, so he's not, you're talking about multifamily, but he's talking about-
No, I'm talking about any. We're, we're tapped out onto the mixed use, period.
I believe you can build more commercial on this site.
We could build no more commercial on this site. How could we? It's a mixed use. We can't build any more commercial.
Your residential was based upon a certain area, right? You're not maxed out in floor area, you're maxed out in density.
No, 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 no. So go back to the definite, no, 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 no.
So putting these six of them in-
No. Go back to the definition, that's why we're here for a variance.
For the density, for the units per acre.
No, but it's also based on the formula for mixed use. So go back to the formula for mixed use, right? Our residential, you can't double dip and you can't cross. We're, we're actually double penalized here. So if we were doing, if we'd left this as purely commercial, we'd be allowed about 1.1 million square feet of commercial on this property. We've built about 2, 2.7, 2.12, it's whatever the Alta says, 207,000. So we have about 900,000 square feet still that we're entitled to. If we were pure commercial, once we try to go to mixed use, first of all, several things happen. When you do commercial, you're entitled to gross lot area, not net lot area. So when you go to residential or a mixed use, the residential element immediately has to use net lot area, which means you have to deduct out for certain environmental resources such as wetlands and steep slopes and floodplains. So then, you also have to have at least 25% residential and 25% commercial. But more importantly is, you can't, what you, when you get to your net lot area, the residential density cannot exceed three dwelling units per acre. The commercial density shall not exceed the FAR for the zoning district. So that's why you have to take, what winds up happening is you have to back out the commercial first, and that's how I got left with the 17, the 16. So let me take you, walk you through that in a more-
So you're saying it's based upon the 25%?
So, so-
So if I take it this, I was gonna read from, but go ahead, I don't wanna-
No, so there's a, so the 25%, so the 25% says at least 25% residential, at least 25% commercial, so.
Okay, and what percentages do we have now?
I'm sorry.
Neil, what are the percentages now of commercial or residential?
I don't have that math in front of me right this second. So we have, the net lot area is 49.458 acres, which is 86.81 acres minus 37.36 acres of slopes and wetlands and so forth. The residential parcel area is 17.26 acres per, per the drawing that we have, of which 1.2 acres is deep slopes, which got us-
And for the public, the area you're talking about is that dash line, right? So you have the area that goes down to Route 9.
Yep, goes all the way down to the parking lot.
Right, that kind of rectangle that goes down to Route 9. You have a portion of the common road, right?
Yep.
So, and then it looks like you're kind of encircling the parking lot, that other corner parking lot, correct? Is that in your calculation, so? Because, I mean, you have a dash line, you have a dash line inside of it.
Here, or here, 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 around here, around, back around here, round through here, but not including that, and then back up and around.
Okay, so you're encircling that little parking lot, which is a commercial parking lot with the residential.
It's already leased to somebody else.
To do what with?
It's been leased for 30 years.
As a parking lot?
It's part of BJ's Demise Premises.
It's part of their parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a provision in 240-81.783, which says, the last sentence says, "Further, the net lot area used to derive density for the residential component of the mixed use shall not be utilized to derive density for the commercial component and vice versa." So to the point-
That's why we're being doubly penalized. We have to use the net lot area calculation, and then we can't even take any credit. So if you even were ever-
So you're understanding is that we cannot build any more commercial on this site?
Correct. Without coming back for another variance.
Malcolm, and Jim, you agree with that assessment?
And I think on the code that it's probably read that way, and it certainly could be a condition of, you know, any resolution, so.
And how much of the existing parking lots are required for the commercial uses?
All right, let me go back. That's in my June 8 letter. I want to say that it was something like 1,200 parking space, 953 parking spaces are required.
And how many are, how many are there and what we're seeing on the map?
According to our Alta is 1,251, or something like that, but I think we grabbed back 63 of them down, because that was in, on the Alta, the 63. Sorry, a little color in there for you. Can you go back to that one? Sorry. So these parking spaces right here, that you can see from the road from 9, we're included in the parking for our project, they were included in the Alta, so I think it's 1,251 minus those 63. But let me go back to my June 8 letter where I laid that out.
So you see how one site plan could have all this information, and we're not going from letter to letter to letter. That's what I was asking for the email. Like, I get that in this document, one could divine this, but having a singular site plan with all this called out would be very useful.
It's 86 acres. It's a little hard to get it on a 2x3. At a scale, that's gonna be illegible.
We accept 24 or 36?
That's what I was saying, 2x3, 2 foot by 3 foot, it's gonna be tough to put it on a, I mean, look at our Altas that we reduced down to 11 by 17, they're on mat sheets because it's such a big site, right? But let me just find that more refined point on the parking as to why.
And that top corner of the site, which at one point was a retirement center, that's not allocated to anything at the moment, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
When you're in front, that top corner of the site, above, above the hatched area, above BJ's.
Correct.
That's not allocated to anything at the moment, correct?
That is not allocated to anything at the moment. That is correct.
So that portion of the site could potentially be developed?
Not without a variance.
Okay.
Because there's no, there's no FAR left essentially. There's no density left once you do this.
Have we maxed out? I didn't think we were maxed out FAR. I thought it was just the percentage is of commercial to residential.
You maxed out density, there's a-
Well, we maxed out density.
Do it this way.
But not, we had maxed out density on that site. You could build three units per acre on that site.
No, I can't build any, no, you're, you're confusing coverage with my density. My density is a mixed use. So you have, the way we did the analysis, just intellectually, and I could get into the fine point of it is-
No, well, I mean, I, I think that Ms. Roberti's determination was that it was the density of the property devoted to the residential use.
Yeah, it was specifically devoted to residential use.
Your initial, your initial conversation, your initial proposal was to, that you could count all of that, and I believe that the current definition of density would not include that particular piece, because it's not, it's not-
My working understanding is that we're, the reason we need a variance is because we have nothing left, and that's no part-
That was, that was on your original proposal. The only, the only question we're talking about now is, is in essence-
So in your original proposal, your density calculations encountered everything that wasn't a built commercial unit, including that portion, and based upon the determination, we amended that, correct?
Correct.
We did not amend the hot, the top line. We amended the bottom line. So my notion is this, that you have 86 acres, you have a net lot-
Are you using that top portion of your residential density calc? I didn't think you were.
No.
We're not.
No, I've used it already up for the commercial count.
Oh, you're using that top portion of your commercial calculations?
I had to, right? Everything that's not, everything that's not, and to go from gross to net, I took out all of that. Then I, the first thing I had to do was make sure I had enough for what was already out there, so I covered that, and then I had what was left, which was 44, which is 16, well, the 17 acres minus blah, 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 becomes 16, and that's how I did it. So you're- Essentially, this 30, this central third, let's just call it that, because let's say it's 90 acres, intellectually, 90 acres, right? Well, not quite, but, yeah, 90 acres, call it 40, 40 here, right, for the wetlands and all that. By the way, you're also, there's also conservation, there's also a covenant on the area you're talking about, if you're talking about protecting those people. There's already an existing covenant that's on the, that's on the Alta. That's it. No, no development being allowed.
I just want to see where that portion of the site is being taken into consideration in the overall math.
Your concern is the top. If you open up the Alta, there's already a covenant and a restriction against development on that area that we took subject to and we acquired the property. So, but you got 40, let's call it 40 acres here. You got 40 acres here.
Let's try to get my first question answered.
Then you got about 30 acres, you got about 30 acres here, and you have about 17, you know, 17 acres left here. When we did the math, we had to take this out to get to net lot area as opposed to gross. Obviously, there's already development here, so that 200,000 square feet had to be confirmed as being allowed, and then what was left was the 17 acres. That's how I got to it. That's why I need to draw the line beyond the lease issue. I need to draw the line over here. And so we backed out to make sure that this could work as well. So as far as we're concerned, there's no additional-
So it doesn't sound like I'm gonna get a compiled site plan? So I can go on to my second question?
So just to confirm what Mr. Alexander said with respect to that piece on the top, he is correct that there is a covenant, there is a restriction in the deed regarding the development of that parcel.
But I'm correct in saying that when this was in front of the town board, they were looking to develop that site?
And part of that was that the town board had authority to release that covenant, and that was the ask.
Which they still have their, they still have that authority.
But still wouldn't have any-
You can still go back to the town board down the hall.
Development rights left without getting a variance. And if you think about it, if the town board were, were going to extinguish the easement, they probably would have passed the zoning text amendment, which spent two years trying to get done, in which case we wouldn't have ever had to be here, because we wouldn't have needed a variance from you, because the law would have been changed and we would have been able to move forward with that more complicated development site.
Right, so why don't we move on to questions?
Yeah. So we asked for a cross-section showing the height of the tallest residential building in relationship to the height of BJ's?
I did not see a question to that effect.
That was my second question.
How is that a relevant?
Because building, because we are reviewing building height, and it is related to that. And the public raised many concerns about views to and from the site, and if we have residential buildings towering over BJ, I feel like that would be useful information to see.
Okay, so you have numerous-
And you have a full 30 mile, this should be an easy thing for your architect to generate.
So, wow, we've been at this for about a year now, and we've-
And we had a public, we had a public hearing and questions being asked.
Look, all I know is I got the only project that's ever come in as a subsidized housing project into a town, and I just keep getting turned around in circles for three years.
Can we not editorialize and just move on?
He's uncalled for, sir.
I'm starting to draw conclusions, and these questions on nuance are only pretty much further proving that there's something else here, that this isn't about finishing a process and making a decision.
So you came in for a height variance. I think showing the heights of all buildings on site is a relevant item.
That's not what you said in your question, by the way. Didn't say anything about two-
Site cross-section that shows the relationship with residential structures to the commercial and the relationship with residential structures for Route 9.
One conversation, right?
Your bullet, read your bullet, would you please?
I just read it out loud.
Would you please read it again and give us another dramatic reading of it? That would be great.
Please, no editorializing.
That's a little bit uncalled for.
Yeah, we don't-
It is called for, because you're, it is, because you know what? No one wants to acknowledge that somehow there has to be fundamental fairness in this process, and we're not getting that right now, and it doesn't feel like it.
We are missing information- We are missing information.
You're not missing information in order to make a decision. You're wanting, you're hoping to find something.
No, a site cross-section is basic information.
You asked for a site cross-section, you've given, been given site cross-sections. You were given site cross-sections in February-
Then it should be an easy thing to generate.
And you were given in September, and your site cross-section did not say BJ's. The word BJ's is not there. That's why you got the site cross-sections-
I said, "commercial" building.
That you just got. And the public was screaming about what does it look like from, from Losi and Susic?
Correct.
And you know what? We gave you 6 more analyses of lines explaining that in our September submission. So you know what? It's reasonable to us to have inferred that you meant from outside the site into the site and not from within the site across the site, especially since you'd been given a section in February from Route 9 that showed it was not only lineal footage far away, but terrain blocked. So it was not an unreasonable inference, and we're not being anything other than transparent. And it wasn't something that was clear from that bullet.
Okay. Again, the relationship of the height of the buildings to the 2 commercial structures on the site, I feel is a relevant question when reviewing the heights of the buildings.
So do, is it in the record what the height of BJ's is?
28 feet.
Is it? No.
I was just screamed at. I, it's not, it's probably not an unreasonable, yeah, it's probably not an unreasonable thought.
BJ's is 28 feet? And what's the highest building you're looking at?
49 feet as measured from the front of the building.
Okay.
And there's topography on the site, right? So there's-
Yeah, everywhere else is higher than us. We're in a bowl.
So is BJ's roof higher or lower than the residential structure?
Because you're asking a lot of questions, and let's go back to your jurisdiction again, right? So let's go back to the seeker. DEC provides guidance on how to do a visual analysis. Where's the historic reference point? Where's the codification in your code in a list?
Okay, so you're not going to supply us information, so can we move on?
Of relevant and important and salient viewpoints. That's what DEC says your visual analysis has to focus on.
The question here is in the context of, you're asking for a height variance. One of the criteria is, in a variance, area variance, it's how does it fit in the surrounding area? BJ's is clearly in the surrounding area. I think it's a reasonable question to ask, what's the height of, show me a cross-section showing BJ's with respect to the proposed development. It's a fair question.
BJ's is within our own development, and for anybody to see over the BJ's to our project is going to be half a mile away.
That's not the issue.
I understand that, but I think that's almost self-evident.
Part of the things that zoning board of appeals do is, they look at, you know, how does something fit in the community, in the location, in the neighborhood?
So we're concerned about how a multifamily building looks against 107,000 square foot big box retailer that's got an approximately 2 and 1/2 acre roof with HVAC equipment on it? It's okay to see the HVAC equipment, but we don't want to see the shingles or the cladding of the resident, of the multifamily building.
Oh, you're right. Maybe the residential building should be lower so you can't see those items.
But should be lower.
Maybe the residential building should be lower so you can't see that.
So you'd rather see over it to see the HVAC equipment.
I'm asking you for this diagram going the opposite way.
So are we going to get the cross-section or not?
I should start hopping.
We're going to get the cross-section or not?
You can get the cross, if that's going to be the basis of like, oh, you didn't give it to us, so therefore you're hiding something. Yeah, we'll give it to you. But this is, this is, I gotta say, we better be bound to brass tacks as to what you need to make a decision, because we're entitled to a decision at some point soon. Whether it's up or down, we're entitled to a decision.
You absolutely are correct.
It's really, it's becoming insulting.
Correct. Absolutely correct. All right, next.
And we'll take the decision, you know, and if it's adverse, obviously there are other venues, but I mean, this is just-
Next question.
Fine. Hold on. Cross-section, let's get specificity, so that way we can play back the videotape. What is exactly the view you would like?
I would like to see the relationship of the proposed residential to the 2 commercial structures.
What would be the second commercial structure?
The Hudson Valley, Hudson Valley office furniture.
But where are we standing when we do that?
From Route 9.
So you want us from Route 9, or do you want us from inside the middle of our own?
Would you like me to put a line in your plan?
That would be great.
You-
Why don't you do just a cross, a cross-section? Do, do, center line of the, how many buildings you have?
Can you go? Yes, I have it.
Put it in the middle of one of the, you know, just do a cut, a section cut, so that you go through BJ's.
So we can do a section cut from us, from our clubhouse? How about from our clubhouse to BJ's and from our clubhouse?
Do a section cut, center of BJ's and the center of the tallest building on the site.
Fine.
David, does that work?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And you want that aware, because you're standing next to BJ's, you're not, I mean, there's no public-
So you just had a very nice section diagram showing it going the opposite way, right?
We did 4 different sections, 4 different viewpoints.
Yeah, pretty much all showing the same thing. So we're asking for one that's going the-
Can you add the number?
This, this style, but also showing the commercial.
But from where to where, from, from, from same location?
Take a line from your highest residential building and cut it through the commercial.
Okay.
One cut through BJ's, center of BJ's, and one cut through-
You guys have this in mind, like Revit, the guy has topography in there, this should be very easy for your architect to do.
But where is the person standing?
I'm not asking for rendering.
It's not, those are not a person standing.
It's not a rendering.
That's a cut.
It's a section.
That's a section cut.
But that's a personal-
These are not rendering.
The far left-
No one's standing in these.
Yes, it is. The far left is a person's viewpoint in every single one of those 5.
Well, you don't need a, you don't need a, you don't need a-
I'm asking, I'm interested in seeing the height between the buildings.
Okay.
The relationship between the 2.
Yep.
Next question.
The next one, I believe, was answered. That was just trying to get some, oh, that was just confirming where, well, I asked for a key where your renderings were being taken from, but I think you did clarify that, right? Because you had a section of renderings in there. Confirmation on how much of the wooded area is being taken down? We're assuming 100%?
No, that's not.
Okay, so how much is being taken?
The full EAF gives you a limited disturbance. It was, it's been in there.
7 or 13 acres.
And it's on the grading plan.
So of this here, of this site plan, you have open, which is-
No, go to Exhibit 26. We have a grading plan. Those are grading, grading in black and in white. It shows the limits of disturbance. So everything in that area will be cleared. That's the second line. So this, that's our grading plan. It should say, yep. Is that, can you slide up again just before you go down?
So existing trees will be left in the middle where you have the path? Is that the main, I mean, I don't know what you want me to defer from this.
Well, for the purposes of our calculation, we assumed they'd all be gone.
Okay.
Which was how we got to our calculation.
I mean, look at the plan. I assume they would have to be. That was, that's the question. So that portion which is currently wooded would be no longer.
And by the way, if we had done commercial, we would be able to pancake the whole site without a variance, period.
I would think the planning board would weigh in and we wouldn't have to deal with it.
Well, that, yeah.
We're going to be having this conversation. Okay, next.
So the tax question. You'd given us the tax roll for the existing commercial buildings. We were asking for the assumed tax roll that you would have with the new residential.
And we gave you that.
I didn't see that in the document.
It was in the September letter we gave, gave you.
Could you just read where that is? I read through it, I did not see that portion called out.
First of all, as you, then, did you also see the couple of pages on the fact that economic aspects are not a reasonable area of inquiry under seeker?
The public had a lot of questions about the tax basis and how this impacts schools, and there's other questions, I mean.
You missed that, I guess, yeah. Okay, so let me, let me read it for you.
So you don't want to answer that question?
No, I answered that question, and it's been answered, and it's in the letter we submitted, and we gave, it was flat out clearly there. And what's disconcerting is that it's not a reasonable area of inquiry as per the seeker handbook itself, as per the courts of the state in New York and federal court. And I'm also trying to find the page right now as I'm saying that as well, in my letter, my most recent letter, September 21st.
I think when we're reviewing your project and how it conforms to the master plan, which is something that we do here-
I actually don't think that's relevant.
That the tax revenue from site is relevant.
Well, seeker's an environmental statute, so-
The master plan shows this site as being switched to pure commercial, and that you're now proposing to basically take a huge chunk and make it residential. So yeah, it's a relevant question on if it's within-
Which of the 5 prongs is it relevant to?
I think.
Which of the 5 what?
Which of the 5 prongs is it relevant to?
Page 6, maybe page-
Thank you, I appreciate it. Of the statutory test, which of the 5 prongs is it relevant to?
This board takes into consideration the master plan when we make decisions.
Which, in which of the 5, which of the 5 prongs per the statute, New York State Town Law 267, right? Which of the 5 prongs references a comprehensive plan?
We're not here to debate that.
No, I'm just, we'd like us to stay on relevant areas of inquiry.
I'll leave it to you.
And thank you for pointing out that it was on page 6. I greatly appreciate that. It said, "Notwithstanding the foregoing," which is where I talk about how the courts have said, "Potential effects that a proposed project may have in drawing customers and profits away from established enterprises, a possible deduction of property values in a community, or a potential economic disadvantage caused by competition or speculative economic loss are not environmental factors subject to seeker review."
And they're not asking, he's not asking that. He's talking about the effect on the tax roll.
Okay, so-
Which goes to the issue of providing services.
Fine, so the issue of providing services. This is a piece of property that was worth $23.5 million previously in the 2020. Because of the, where it's wound up, its 2023 assessed valuation was $14 million and still subject to tax or charari. We're expecting to be able to contribute back $10.7 million.
So we'd be back to where it was 3 years ago?
It'll exceed it, actually, wouldn't it? It would be $24.7 million instead of $23.5.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Just one last question, because it's a question that the public also asked in the last meeting, which I thought was a good question. It seems like this is one of the only developments that Dakota was doing, which was 100% workforce?
That's not true at all.
Okay, well, then please, please respond.
So they are a workforce subsidized housing developer throughout New England and New York. Every project they do works with a housing development agency and involves subsidies in some form or fashion, whether it's, you know, housing, 9% or 4% housing tax credits or other programs.
And this development is 100% affordable workforce housing units?
Yes.
And, but it didn't seem like your other projects were necessarily 100% workforce housing units. Is there a reason, is there a reason that they're not market rate?
All of them have some sort of income restriction. Why, if we were market rate, would that have been an easier approval process?
I think it's a valid question why it's 100% workforce housing and not mixed.
My question's valid too. Are you telling me that it would be, would have been an easier process if it had all been market rate or luxury?
I'm not saying it would be easier, honestly.
Would it be an easier process if it didn't involve kids?
It's speculative, so.
It might be easier if the density wasn't so high.
Would it be, is our price point a proxy for something else in this room?
I think you're putting words in my mouth with that.
Well, I think your last bullet goes to that question mark, if you ask me.
So my last bulletin was related directly to schools, and if you had any demographic data you can share on-
We shared, we shared-
Number of stu-, like, you guys, I would imagine, have an idea of, you're going to have 2 people per household in this, you're going to have families in this. I'm just curious.
Yeah, we, we, when we had discussed this-
Can you speak on the record as to that?
Okay, so we gave you what NICE Ed knows about the enrollment of the school district. We gave you what the school has told NICE Ed is their enrollment. We gave you their projections, which have been going down, the school's down anywhere from 15 to 27, 28%, depending on which milestones you want to look at in the past several years. They've lost over 1,000 kids in their school district. We're very confident that we're not going to be a burden to the school district, given how much volume and capacity is there. We figure anywhere, whether you use Rutgers or other metrics, this is anywhere from 20 to maybe 40 kids tops across 12 grades.
All right, you're right about it.
And by the way, let's just also be clear, we can't discriminate against families with children, right? Let's just be clear about that.
No, but you guys are very experienced with this type of housing.
And we've told you that it's 20 to 40 kids.
Please keep it down.
And if you don't, you have questions on that? Have your planner, go check Rutgers, have them check any metrics you want, because it really, it is what it is. And we're telling you it's somewhere between 20 and 40, and there are different metrics out there, and if you want to report on that, we can get your report out, your planner can give you a report too. I don't really want to give you a report to have you say we cherry picked what, what metrics to use. So have your planner give you a report. You have our escrow.
So when you, when you design a development like this, you have a unit breakdown, right? You have an idea of, we're doing 2 bedrooms, 3 bedrooms.
Yeah, it's about, so it's about .11.
We anticipate single people. What are you anticipating?
It's about .11 for the average 2 bedroom. Point 11. An average 3 bedroom's probably closer about .2.
Okay, remind me what, for the record, what your breakdown was?
I said it, somewhere, depending on what metric you use, anywhere from 20 to 40.
How many 2 bedrooms, how many 3 bedrooms, how many 1 bedrooms?
I gotta look that up again.
We got that, right?
I gotta look that up again.
Yeah, you're giving for fast.
Just give me a second to look that up again.
While you're looking that up, you know, the last question I had, which I don't think we've touched upon, was something I did bring up in the first meeting, which was, was why there's no commercial in this portion of the development? You know, the planning board has been requiring this for pretty much any density is to have some commercial component added, you know, that serves the residence.
We do, we have 212,000 square feet of commercial in our mixed use.
So, you know, this area is being served by BJ's and a used furniture store, and that's the commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and nothing in your code requires differently, plus at two and a half stories and 35 feet.
It's not required in the code, but it is something that the planning board has been requesting.
But how do you do that? You have two and a half stories, 35 feet. You tell me, we have about, let's just call it roughly 45,000 square feet per floor out there.
You asked me to design the development.
And you tell me, you, you're saying basically, cut a third of your project as well, by the way.
I'm saying put a coffee shop somewhere.
Why? Cause there are only about like seven failed coffee shops running up and down Route 9 between Poughkeepsie and Fishkill?
Okay.
Like every fifth door is empty.
All right, so this is what we're gonna do.
So wait, I want to answer that question that was out there. There was 48 one bedrooms, 62 bedrooms and 36 three bedrooms. But I, I do think your planner should prepare that report to you, so that way we don't have a fight over what metrics we used and didn't use, and that they use a high and a low, and you guys can find the median and the average and multiply out. It's gonna wind up between 20 and 40.
Okay.
All right, so I'm gonna open up the floor to folks who have questions. Some basic house rules, because we're gonna, please limit, if you come to the microphone and you want to speak, please limit yourself to five minutes. And, and also, let's see, why don't we do this? Does anybody in the audience have anything to speak for or against this variance?
Oh, and all comments should be addressed, all comments should be addressed to the board, not to the applicant.
Right. Are we gonna say, all right, so who wants to come up to the mic first? State your name and address for the record and please just limit it to five minutes. Name and address, please.
John Collins, 49, Losi Road. I'm on the topic of the visual impact, visual environmental impact, and I just have a couple of slides. This is from the, this is from the Dutchess County Parcel Access. And the highlighted property is 221 Old Hope Well. So you're looking, you're looking from Old Hope Well through 221 Old Hope Well, and the red box is very closely approximating the Alpine Parcel. The, the red blocks represent the buildings. They're, they're not proportionally correct, they're locationally very close to where they, where they are. And I, they picked, I meant, I picked 221 Old Hope Well because the applicants make some references to it. Now, the first thing to recognize, and this is gonna tie back to some of the prior conversations, the, coincidentally, the elevation of the residence at 221 Old Hope Well is 221 feet above sea level. So you got, the address matches the height, the ground, the ground level. Oh, all numbers are ground level, nothing to do with building height. I can, I'll add that in. So, and if you go all the way to the back where the right, top right corner of that highlighted property runs into Building D, Building D, the ground level of Building D is also 221 feet above sea level. So it's flat, it's totally flat going in, and, and then you have, when, getting back to what you guys were talking about, the heights, you're gonna put a 50-foot building that is totally visible for the whole length. Now they, there's a, a white block in there that they, it's, it's called the white barn. And it's in their proposal. They took a picture from the, from the, where the red and the, and the yellow meet, that's the, the property border. They took a picture down to the white barn in the fall with what they call the leaf off time, there's no leaves. And you could see, what they, what they were saying is that, yes, you can see the white barn from that line, but you can't see it clearly. And that's actually true. But you can, you can see it and it's standing at ground level, it's a straight line, there's no big oak trees, there's trees that are about so, so wide, and you can see it. I don't know why they did this, but if you just, if you put that 50-foot building up and then stand at the property of, or the house of 221, you're gonna be looking at the broadside of Building D, and it's gonna be 50 feet higher than all the land around it. So, while I have that one up, this gets into the, the tree density, the trees. It's roughly about nine acres, the site, nine to 10 acres. They're gonna remove five acres of trees. Five acres out of nine is trees, and it's the entire building A, B and C, the three, the three red things to the, the left side, that's all gonna be removed. So it's basically that everything you, everything on top of that hill to the, is gonna be gone. Again, that's more than 50% of the total project size is gonna be removed, trees, making it much easier to see the buildings. Oh, and the, the area where Building E and G and C, there's that light colored area, that's the, where, that's, that's got no trees on it. That's the area adjacent to BJ's. It's on the hill above BJ's. You guys were asking before, BJ's is at 185, 190 feet above. That building, the ground level where that Building E is gonna be, is 215. So you could pretty much, so, and the BJ's is 28 feet tall, so call it 30. As a, as a picture in your mind, picture taking a 50-foot building, putting it on top of BJ's, that's your height, that you're asking about. That's what people are gonna see.
Thank you.
So now can you switch? To two.
I'm gonna ask you, John, to, to run through this one pretty quick, if you would. All right? Run through this one pretty quick, if you would.
I will, I will if I have to, but I, I think this, no, if you would evaluate the markings, markings on this one, you would answer almost all of those questions that you had about the site. The, the topography, the, that somebody wanted to have it be a pancake. The, the part, the, the area in the, in the green, it's like all along the right side is 221 feet above sea level. Oh, yeah. There's a, I wrote in BJ's over there. So you can see BJ's in relation to the Building E next to it. So, Building E is gonna be 50 feet, 40 to 50 feet up from 215. Okay? So, so would say at the 215, if you go all the way, if you go up, you're, you're seeing Sisich Place at the, at the corner where, where it bends, that's 230, 235. So there's like a 15 feet, 15 feet drop off from Sisich down to the property. And then we already know on the other side that it's not as a pancake. So if you take, if you take a 50-foot building and you put it at 215, 215 qu-, uh, feet, to people on, on Sisich, you're gonna see 35 feet of a 50-foot building and 25 feet of a 40-foot. So.
Understood.
It is very simple, it's not complicated.
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah.
The people on Hope Well are gonna see all of the building.
Yes.
Now, can I get to the last? This is where the confusion is gonna come in. Yeah. There it is. Okay. The top part of this is just, I'm just, these, now, everything here is coming from the, the document and it's the conclusion drawn from all of the stuff they were talking about. The small print is pretty, it's, I'm just showing that that's fairly accurate what it's saying. Building E, yeah, Building E is 15 feet lower than, than the top of Sisich, so you have what I'm saying, you've got 35 feet of the, and this is about Building D, which is being flagged. We have to scroll. Time to take the rest of the paper. This is an exact quote from their conclusion coming up. No, now you, now you, come back up a little bit, back up the other way.
Do, do you want to read from this? I mean, we, we have a copy.
Yeah.
Would that be easier?
Okay, right there, it's good, stop there. Okay, a quote, "The proposed finished floor levels," that's one, two, three levels of the unit, "in all cases are equal to level with or sometimes two stories lower in elevation than the surrounding residence." Everything I said, everything is higher than.
Right.
But they're saying it's lower. Makes absolutely no sense. So although, yeah, there'll be virtually no visibility into the windows, oh, as many community members suggested at the August meeting. I find that a little bit insulting. These people came up one after the other worried about looking out their windows and seeing this, and they are. You know, they're gonna, especially in winter, obviously, but every night when the lights go on, these people are gonna be looking for both Old Hope Well and Sisich at a, a light panel, 35 feet of it. The lights in the windows.
Okay.
The, the lights in parking lot, they're, they're, they're gonna have pole lights, they're gonna have lights on the buildings themselves.
Understood.
So, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I don't think we need a rebuttal on every, every person.
Right, right, you give it.
Yeah, let's do it at the end.
Let's do it at the end, all together. Let's hear everybody's questions. Yeah, I don't know if I want to go back and forth all right. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak? Please, your name and address. You look familiar.
Yeah, Jim Gloria, 50, Losi Road. First off, Mr. Var, thank you for being, thank you for questioning and thank you for doing your, your job and, and just not just, you know, forcing a vote through. I think we all want to vote tonight. The only, I, I know we all want to vote tonight. We all don't want to keep on having to come back and play the game. And, and what we see unfold is a game. You know, you're looking for information, they're saying they give it to you, but they didn't. And the, the one thing that stuck out tonight for me was when the gentleman said that, you know, all the issues were addressed from the meeting, you know, that we all said all of our, all of our concerns in their response to you. But when you pushed, that, they weren't all answered. And then he got upset that you pushed because he didn't have the answer. And so how many times as public do we have to keep on going through this? I thought this was a simple process, you know, they put a variance in. I, I know it's more simple, I, I know it's harder and there's a lot involved, but I thought from your perspective is that, you know, they applied for the variances and you looked at the certain information those, those, that was needed, and you make, you make a determination, but it seems like there keeps on, we keep on throwing, you know, a couple more questions out and he has to go find more information, but I don't, I don't know what that process looks like, but you're not getting it in, in a, in a timely manner. So the, the other thing too is, maybe we all don't understand too how he's saying that you don't have the authority. I think that's what he said to you clearly, is that you didn't have the authority to make some of those decisions that he was talking about. So I don't know who has to have that authority, but if it's not with this board, then it really should just be voted down and go in front of the board of who the authority is that has to make those decisions. I mean, plain and simple, it's to us, anyway. Now, the last thing I want to point out, because I really didn't think about this until just now, is the lighting. You know, and I, and being involved in some projects in, in the corporate life of putting in stores and, and communities, it's one thing that's overlooked by community members, but there's gonna be a lot of lighting that's gonna have to go on for, for security and safety in, in these, in these complexes, especially on the back end. So when you're looking at like parking lights, how hard, how high are these parking lights towers gonna be? And how much are they gonna illuminate? And when you have no leaves on the ground, how much is gonna flood out? I, I, cause I know BJ's, you, you can see it, and on the back of BJ's, they have all those security lights, so, you know, some of us can see those little orange glows or whatever is back there and when not. So what is, what is the lighting gonna look like behind these buildings? So I just, just something else to think about, but anyway, thank you for, for doing your due diligence on, on this project and.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak? Name and address, please.
I'm Nick Clark, 33, Sisich Place. So I just want to thank everybody for being here. And jeez, I'm sorry we're making this difficult for you. So my question is, the attorney mentioned a five-pronged rule to get things approved. I see another one here too, that mentions determinations should take into consideration the benefit to the applicant, blah, 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 weighed against a detriment to the health and safety of community. Number one is whether undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting. I think we've made it pretty clear how we feel about that. Whether to benefit some of the applicant be achieved by some method feasible to pursue other, perhaps not. They can't get their benefit if they don't get their variance. If the requested area variance is substantial, I think what you're asking for here is extremely substantial. I mean, you're, you're asking for way beyond the, the typical use of this property. Whether it'll have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, yeah, I think, I think there's pretty clear statements that that's probably true. And finally, funnily enough, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations should be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but not preclude the granting. I think this is pretty clearly self-created. I recall 25 years ago when BJ's was being built, we had a community group and the original site plan involved using property in the wetlands, way further back into the woods. Fortunately, through our efforts and the zoning board's efforts and the planning board, we were able to, to change that plan drastically. But I do recall, it's probably on the record somewhere, there was a board member at the time, Mr. Bill Parsons, I'm sure Barbara remembers him, and he basically turned to Alpine and said, "Hey, it's not my fault you bought a crappy piece of property. And we shouldn't have to be the ones that bear the burden of that. You bought a piece of property that you can't really use for what you want, and you're asking for extreme measures to do it so that you can make a profit. I understand everybody who wants to make a profit, but if you can't, walk away from it."
And next, thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Please, name and address, please.
Good evening, Grace Martin, 52, Philstone, Loop in Wappingers. Once again, I also thank you for doing your dual diligence, I do appreciate that. I urge the vote, the board tonight to make this come to a vote. I appreciate the questions you've asked. One thing that we talked about last time was the increase of school taxes. Dr. Brock himself stood in front of the town board in June of this year stating that "Our town could no longer live with more and more housing going in, that we will have to build a new junior high." I think the data that Dakota has been talking about is what has been in their notes, and I kind of looked. It is, it is a survey that was done a long time ago, pre-COVID. There is no doubt, only three months ago, our man who runs our school system says we need more schools, that we are growing. One of the issues last time that you, I don't think you, you said you were gonna look into it, but a lot of us talked about the increase in cost of, and the need of more medical, firefighters and police. I thought that was gonna be something that was gonna be, was gonna be talked about. Many of us had issues. I myself explained I had a medical emergency in this building last, last October, and my local ambulance, right across the street, didn't bring me to the hospital. And my tax dollars pays for my local ambulance. And my tax dollars pays for my local ambulance, and it didn't. Please don't start this as a precedent. I think these numbers keep changing. It was originally 11 acres, and now it's 17 acres. No matter what, they're asking for, instead of 48 houses, 144. That is substantial. They have not come to you for negotiation. They were in front of the town board and withdrew their application when they saw that it was not going in the right direction, and therefore the town board also did not do a vote. They've been in front of the planning board, okay, and the planning board sent you about nine to 10 reasons. It is documented of why they had some issues with this. So please, we spent a lot of time on this, they have spent a lot of energy on this. They're saying they'll give vouchers. New York State voucher is not going to help me as someone who's trying to downsize as a senior citizen. They will have no control, and you will have no control of who moves into this housing. You know what's going on right now in New York City. That New York City mayor is now, that New York City mayor has given out vouchers that can't be honored in New York City, that they are now can be used not only anywhere in New York State, but across this nation. So you and Dakota will have no control of what we do. The only thing we have control of is that our taxes are going to go up, and we can't control that either. So again, I urge you, you've done your dual diligence, I urge you to make this come to a vote tonight, because this has been going on in front of this town for over three years in all three boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak? Name and address, please.
Sally Williams, 1 Briar Lane, Wapengers. I just want to say thank you to you two and to the people that are here, because we're giving up our evenings. We all have to get up the next morning and go to work. I don't know how anyone can say only 20 to 40 kids are going to be in a complex building. You're going to tell somebody she can't get pregnant and have twins and triplets? I mean, and plus all the other new homes that are going in, they're going to move in with families, and add to the people who are moving into these complexes. It's too much. This is going to change the valley tremendously. And to iterate and go over what I just said last week, I work in the workforce development program. The mayor said last week, we are looking upstate to put these people. Upstate is us. We need to stop it, and we need to stop it tonight. Enough is enough. Too many hard people gave up their lives and worked for this valley to make it beautiful. Everyone here has worked, lived here over 20 years. We want our homes to stay where it is. We don't want to see lights. We don't want to add more to our police department. We don't want to add more to anything else. We have to stick together. If you live in the valley, all of you, you know this is a beautiful place. People come here for the summer and for the fall. Keep it that way. It's not right that other people should come up here and change what we've already built. It's not fair. We want our homes to stay where they are. We want to live the way we've used to living, and we don't want to see crime or any crowdedness going on and more taxes. I don't want to stay working forever. I'm 73 years old and I'm still working. I don't want to work till I die. So please, make the decision tonight, and let's get this over with. This is not good for the valley. It's not good for anyone here. I rest my case.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak? Just name and address, please.
Barbara G. Filippo, 56 Lane Gate Road, Wapenger Falls. I want to let everybody know, I'm glad everybody attended tonight, and you know, everybody is really concerned about what's going on, the same thing. We're all bringing our grievances, because what is it going to be? It's going to be all the people laying down on the sidewalks, not even a place to, it's going to be so overcrowded. You've got people in the street, like New York City, laying in the street with no resources or anything? Does a town like Wapengers, a small town like Wapengers, even have the money? Where are they going to get, where are they going to have to cry for money for these people? You know, they, they can't afford it. And you know, between the federal government, the state, everybody's running out of money. So how could you bring more people here? You know, this is, this has to stop. And this is, this is what everybody that came here tonight wants. They want, you know, they want to be protected, we're elderly, and you know, where are we going to get the money, even for the schools? Can I keep building more schools, more schools? You know how long it takes to do all this stuff? Money? Everybody's crying money. Where's the money going to come from? I mean, it's just a small town, Wapengers. Everybody's protesting against this from the beginning, and this, this just isn't going to work out. And if the population grows even more, more births, this, that, where are they going to put them? It's going to be an ordinance where they, they just won't fit into the rooms. They start building these condos or whatever, they build their apartments. You know, it's going to be jammed into, that house that burned, what did they, burned down or something, or was 30, 30 people in one house? Are we going to have that around here? That's pretty scary, you know? So I appreciate you doing what you're doing, and you know, this should never be allowed. It's a disgrace. It's a disgrace to the town, and we all live in this town here, including you people. You have to, you know, you can't let it happen. You know, it's just stop it while you can. Just stop it, and there's no further fighting or questions. Yes, this is, this is it, has to be an end, because it's, it's, everything is, the way I look at it, everything is destroyed already, the way people got, telling, telling us how to run our town. We're just a small town. We can't take it. You know, don't have resources for the fire, police, ambulance, doctors, you know, we're elderly. You think we could take this? You know, people, we cram, there'd be more births around here than, overpopulation? Where are they going to put them? The school, the school system is going to fall apart. I guarantee that. You know, never mind the, the police or anything else. It's really a pity. Please, please listen to us and, you know, protect, protect your people here in Wapengers, okay? They have some nerve to just phone us, throw us around. I won't, I will not stand for this, and neither will anybody else.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Hello. Courtney Glorioso, 50 Losi Road. Again, thank you for meeting here this evening. I would like to speak to the school concerns. My daughter attends Ketchum High School, and I assure you, it's at capacity. The hallways are overcrowded as it is. The, the class sizes are too large as they are. The resources are spread thin. The teachers are awesome. They do a great job with what they have, but they're already crowded. So if you're going to add more children to this district, how are you going to keep the class sizes from getting bigger than what they already are without building another school? How is my child going to be safe in, in case of an emergency going down an already crowded hallway if you're going to add more bodies into this hallway? And how are the resources at the school going to be even more divided among these students? Please don't set the precedent by accepting, thinning out the resources and watering down her educational experience here. You know, it's easy to manipulate the numbers, you know, looking at pre and post-COVID. A lot of parents started homeschooling, so, but now that COVID is quote-unquote over, right, you know, now these kids are coming back into the district, or going to be, you know. So, you know, and it's still crowded, just like the Dunkin' and the Starbucks and the Ready Coffee, all the way up Route 9. So I don't know what coffee shops he goes to, but...
Thank you. Name and address, please.
My name is Sarah Dobbins. I live at 6 Julie Drive. And I have concerns. When we came back, when we came here in August, you, as the board, said to the representatives that we had come up and spoken about a lot of issues, and that you were giving them two months to come up with answers to our questions. Now, they addressed you tonight, but they did not address any of the concerns or questions we brought up. They never even took any time to say, "We know your constituents are asking these questions." They didn't address any of them, even though you gave them two months, which we all thought was an extreme long time for you to give them. Our community is rallying. We don't want this. We're asking our zoning board to act on our behalf. But yet, their legal representative has been nothing but rude to you gentlemen in this board, this meeting. This truly is bullying, as we don't want our children to learn. So when they watch TV and they watch this go back, they see that you gentlemen who asked questions on our behalf were bullied to be quiet, were bullied to not continue the conversations. Mr. Barr, you were spoken over many times when you were bringing up questions by, by Mr....
Alexander.
Alexander. So this leads to another question that we're going to have. When, if they get their way, which we all hope they don't, when they get their way, and there's a legal problem coming up? Our legal representative is a line item on the Wapinger budget. They have, I would assume, some deep pockets. There won't be a contest. They will get their way. They will do whatever destruction they want to do, however they want it to look, because they're not even listening to the town of Wapinger now. When they need you to bend some rules or to give in to them, they're not respecting any of that. So Mr. Alexander wants an answer to, in his own words, because this has been going on for over a year. How sad. So therefore, if he wants an answer, we would like you to give him an answer. We, as your constituents, asking you to support us, as you have put on this, been on this board, to do that, we are asking you to say no to them and let it be. If he bought, they bought a bad lot, they did, and that's all there is to it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak tonight? Name and address, please.
Ed Burstflower, 2 Stengar Court, Wapengers. I'm here tonight speaking as a citizen, not representing the planning board, but I do have concerns with this, you know, the whole variance procedure here tonight. Part of which is, you know, the planning board did, you know, agree at one point to allow you to be lead agency for this, for your proceeding, for the variances. But during this, I mean, we haven't been, you know, at least copied any information regarding this project. Members of the board are, you know, talking about things, just, you know, concerned about it. But my biggest concern at the end of the day is, you know, if you guys do approve this, you know, you're basically tying the planning board's hands at the end of the day, because you're giving them a height variance, but then if the planning board doesn't agree with the height variance, and we say, well, you know, the visual aspect is off, and we think that there's, you know, things that need to be, you know, buildings may be lowered, or they need to be spread out, or, you know, other things, you know, we're going to be put in a corner. I think you need to really keep a deep look at it. You know, also too, is the density. I mean, the density is, you know, it's higher than any other, you know, project within the, you know, within the town itself. You need to look at that as well. Density is something that, you know, again, this could affect future projects, you know, because you'll have some other people come in with something similar. But my, you know, but at the end of the day, I really think, you know, it's, they're coming in, they want all or nothing. They decided to go down this path because the town board, you know, wouldn't entertain the zoning changes. You know, if they went and they, you know, what they were proposing in the front side, you know, doing, you know, mixed-use buildings, you know, with a, you know, commercial aspect in each building on the first floor, you know, that may have made more sense. You know, the village, you know, the, basically village concept is what they were selling to everybody. That we don't, you know, we don't have that at the end of the day here. You know, this is basically an apartment complex they want to build. The other thing too is, you know, at the end of the day, again, the plans that you have, and everybody disagrees with me, but you know, it's basically set up as a subdivision. You know, we have property lines on here, you know, everything is basically laid out to do a subdivision. So at the end of the day, if they go through this whole project, keep in mind, you know, they're going to try to come in backdoor after they build this out at some point, and it is going to be subdivided, because they're going to need it for financial purposes. So that's, that's a whole other issue that nobody wants to bring up. But it is going to be, you know, it is going to be a reality at the end of the day. So I just, you know, hopefully, I mean, think a little harder, you know, if you, you know, if you guys feel you need comments from the planning board, you know, again, you know how to do that. The secretary, same secretary that's for the ZBA is also our secretary as well. She can, you know, basically take your comments and, you know, we can respond to different things. But again, you know, you need to listen to the residents. I mean, the residents are, you know, very concerned. This isn't, you know, where we get stuck. You know, as a, as a planning board, I sit here in front of, you know, the residents on many occasions, come out and they're very angry, you know, but they're angry because it's, you know, it's a project that's being built, but it's usually as of right. So it meets the zoning code, never gets to you guys. You know, in this case, they haven't even gone to the planning board at all, but now they're coming to you looking to get something that's not even allowed at all. So I think it's just, you know, at the end of the day, I think that you guys, you know, probably make the right decision at the end of the day. But again, just...
And I'd like to assure you that this board is fully aware of the implications of what our decisions are going to lay out.
I know you are. Trust me, I do know. But again, before it goes any further, I, I'd be very curious to get all the answers that, you know, from the applicant, from all the residents that were brought up tonight. I think a lot of the residents have very valid points. And, you know, just the process of this whole project, I disagree with it. I really don't think it should have gone this way. Should have gone to the planning board. The planning board should have went and turned around and, and worked with the applicant to make this something a little different than what it really is, what's being presented here. And then if a variance was needed, you know, we would refer it to as we always do. So, but anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience have, want to speak tonight? All right, so we got one more. Name and address, please.
Ken Christman, 237 Old Hopewell Road. Is there a possibility I can borrow your parcel access slide that you had up before? The parcel access? Can we see that particular slide again?
I think we have a printout. I think the board has a printout.
I think what the property owners around really are looking for is a common sense decision. You know, it, it doesn't take us looking into the legal implications, it doesn't take us looking into, you know, a modification of their plans to understand what the density is to put 144 units on a small parcel of property. So as many other people have said, it is clear that you're going to put 144 apartments, they're going to have children. Our school system is taxed at a point right now that the junior high school kids can't carry backpacks in the hallway. They have to take them off. It is so crowded between classes. Every classroom is at capacity. So if somebody says they're going to do a large development like this and not think it has an impact on the schools, it's an absolute foolish statement, and we are not fools. The other thing that I'd have to say is, when you want to talk about detriment to the property owners in the area, you want to put a building that the BJ's height at 25 feet, that's going to be the ground level of their new building. So it's going to be 50 feet in the air. You're going to have that roof line above the trees. Everyone is concerned, my neighbors on Sussage are concerned that you're going to be able to see the lights, you're going to be able to see the top of the building. Well, in between Sussage and their proposed building is my property. So detriment to my property is, they're currently talking about maybe improving the property value for tax purposes by 10 million? I have a developed piece of property back there that I can probably put five $1 million homes on. I can put one $5 million home on. I don't need 144 units to increase the property value for tax purposes. And doing something like that would have much less impact. So they're going to put a 50-foot tall building overlooking the tree line? Their runoff is going to come onto my property, which has a stone-lined creek, and you think I'm going to build houses back there that are going to look like that? If we did a project like that, I would guarantee you, all of my neighbors on Sussage would love it for a few reasons. It's going to increase their property value. We're going to put privacy trees in. You're not even going to know what's back there except for a small access. So if you have a choice... So if you have a choice of detriment to the property, detriment to the area, or a potential improvement to my neighbors, I'm going to look at something more as an improvement. But if you look at what they're proposing to do, and take this density at 144 units with such a high line of sight, you're going to have an impact to the quality of life to those people that live there. A common sense decision is no. We don't want that. We just simply don't want that in our community. We don't want the negative impact. We don't want the negative impact on our property values. So I appreciate everyone's time here, taking a look at this and being the sound of voice for us.
Thank you. Thanks. Is there anybody else in the audience? Any comments? Okay, Neil, quickly. I'm going to ask you, please be brief.
Yes. Couple of clarifications. First of all, we've said throughout that the... There's no subdivision here. Period. It's financeable either through a condo or a Korea with common reciprocal easement agreements. So we've said that, we've made that clear on many occasions. Other things, school enrollment. Now, how they're operating, what classrooms, what staffing, can't speak to that. What I can tell you is in October of 2014, you had 11,411 students enrolled. In pursuant to the most recent data that was provided tonight, which is 2021, 2022, but that is the most recent data available, you had 10,176 students enrolled. That's a little over 12, about 1,235 student delta in less than a decade, with projections going further downward. Still need the memo? I think it's best to get from your planner.
I think that would be useful, that Malcolm weigh in on at some point.
Yeah.
Do we need to request that formally, or is this...
No, we just did.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to bring up just really quickly is Exhibit 29.
Which is?
Which is the one from Thriven, which is the site context plans. And two quick aspects, because, and it goes to Mr. Collins, and I'm not... This is not getting in a fight. I think this helps explain why I use the word "lower." I think we were going to still obviously disagree, but I want to explain why I use the word "lower." And what you'll see is that the houses on Seussich Place have first-floor elevations ranging from as high as 240 down to as low as 225. And then we're at 213. So taking the most advantageous math to us, right? 240 to 213 is 27 feet, hence stories lower. And I... Hold on, there's one other part of it. One other part of it. Mr. Collins, just one other part of it.
He's got the floor. You guys had the floor. He had the floor.
And that's, I'm explaining why I use the word "lower." I understand he's quantifying. I think he did a good aspect of quantifying his perspective. The other aspect that I wanted to get at is the lineal distance of how far away these are. It's all in the exhibit, and to spend some time with it, you're anywhere from a tenth of a mile to two tenths of a mile away. Also, if you could go a little bit to the right, Brian, if you don't mind with that. What's also important is when you go from the left side of that exhibit to the right side of the exhibit, the left side shows you existent foliage, but what's also really salient is you can see that there's floodplains and wetlands in there. So there's either prohibitory or regulatory permits that would be needed in order to clear those trees that aren't on our property, that are on others' properties, in some case, the neighbors, and in one case, it's probably the tax lot over at 237 has a large portion of that. So there's a fair amount of that that should stay, and certainly, we can't take down. So I think that's important. And then the last part is, is if you... Contextually, these houses between each other, when you talk about lighting side to side, the houses side to side are probably 50 to 100 feet from each other and seeing each other's light side to side. I think that's a really important context. I'm not drawing any conclusions from it, but compared to, if you're going to see our lights, which have... Our lights are going to meet your lighting code, which is a planning board issue, obviously, that we'll have to deal with then, but I think it's really important context, because we're providing probably 10 times to 20 times the distance linearly front to back that these homes have side to side as to lighting that they're experiencing side to side in the front. And I think that's an important quantification of, and distinguishing feature here, not withstanding the fact that obviously we're going to comply with the lighting code. And that's how, you know, we believe... And then the last, I guess, aspect is we'd ask you to take another look at Exhibit 31, which is the quality of the construction here. And it is beautiful. It is residential in the sense of, in the sense of the scale. This is not flat roofs. It has, you know, peaks that are consistent with the colonial and New England aspects. It's clad. It's not vertical cladding. It's horizontal cladding, which again, gets back to the nature of this area. And obviously, we can work on colors and muting those colors if for some reason you think that the taupe color we picked is not, you know, and you would like to see gray because you think gray makes more sense, and, you know, and have us do gray with black window frames and you feel that that, you know, 1,000 feet away, that'll help even further mute it, to use a different palette. We're open to having that discussion. But the scale of it, of the building and the height, and then the last aspect, I think, which is really important, which gets lost in all of this, is your definition of how you measure height is making these numbers look much bigger than they are. This is a three-story building, okay? But you have to measure height from the front door. You don't get any advantage, again, of average grade. If you're using average grades, this would all be under 40 feet.
Understood. We know that.
And, no, but I think for the public standpoint, this isn't 25 on top of 25 that way, and I think it's really important that that be understood and appreciated as a sufficiently distinguishing attribute.
Me too.
So thank you for the time to do that. I think we're aligned with the public as far as makes, probably makes good sense to close the public hearing and then give you your 60 days to, you know, per the law, to come to a determination and work with your consultants to get...
I know. We know the due process, folks.
Work with your consultants to get the additional school kit information, and we can also provide you in the next 10 days, so if you wanted to keep written comment open for two weeks or something like that, these are all just suggestions. We'd be amenable to that too, so we could get it to you within 10 weeks. Someone like Mr. Collins, who's probably very interested in seeing those BJ's and our building's relationship, would have an opportunity to then comment in writing to you all, and, you know, and rather than keep the public comment, the public hearing open and people don't have to come back, but they have an opportunity to react to that new information. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
David, can I get your email address or phone number? Could I have Steve reach out to you just to clarify the view that you're looking?
Yeah, I mean, that's something Barbara can supply.
Yeah, I just think you are an architect, correct?
Yes.
So I think it would be helpful just to have him speak to you directly and make sure he's providing what he wants. And then I just have one other question for the board. Has the board been to the site?
Oh, yeah.
We had a visit, yes.
Okay. When you were there, could you see other houses?
From where we were standing?
Anywhere. Go anywhere on the site.
Well, we were there. We were there a week ago.
We were there the summers. Flooded.
I'll send you...
Fully vegetated.
15 more pictures in February.
I believe we could see the white barn from standing in the parking lot.
And we're standing on pavement too.
Oh, you didn't actually walk up to the area where that's being built?
Well, we stood on pavement and walked up the hill. Yeah.
I just wanted to...
All right, gang. All right. Thank you. All right. I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Could I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Now, Jim, as far as written comment goes, I mean, is there any advantage keeping that open for a couple of weeks?
I don't believe so. I mean, as Neil said, you know, they were asked regarding the cuts. I believe that's the only open item that the board has requested. I don't know if anyone, I mean, if anybody from the public wishes to comment on it, they can certainly comment on it. We'll put it up on the website when we get it. But I don't believe it, you know? That's the only open item that the board has requested. The applicant has submitted, as David said, a lot of information that has to be called through, so... But I don't believe that written, keeping written comment open.
I know that hurts. I mean, based upon people talking, it sounded like there are people that felt that they had questions that were outstanding that were not responded to.
No, I understand that. I mean, so I just, I mean, I think for purposes of closing the public hearing, you know, the, I think additional comments coming in, in fairness to whoever's going to comment, they're going to want a response, but you really can't respond once you close the public hearing. So I think, I think in the interest of closing things out and moving things along, it probably makes the most sense.
There was an open issue to the last one on the water. Are they hooked up now? Are they going to be hooked up to the town water?
The answer is they are. So right now, there is a tenancy agreement with BJ's to supply, to draw fire flow from Losy Road. There is a connection to the water tank behind BJ's. That's correct.
The hydrants.
That's right.
But not in the...
No. That's the current thing on the property. And with respect to water, any water connection would have to be under the authority of the town board, so this board has no authority over the water.
But it's on your form. It's a section of my water.
Yes, what did you say?
Yes. I mean, they intend to apply to the town board for water.
We have a little sort of letter that CPL reviewed, the town's in the air reviewed, and back in November of 2021, they found that...
There's sufficient capacity.
...capacity in UWWD, and that the town should consider district expansion to incorporate early.
Also, per the town code, any multifamily development would require to be on the water.
All right. We're done with public comment now, okay? All right. We're done. All right. So next order of business then, then tonight, is I'm going to make a motion to authorize Malcolm and Jim to render their decisions.
Well, we don't render decisions. We draft decisions.
Wait, I'm sorry. Draft the decision. And we will have our decision read on the November 14th meeting.
Is that in the form of a motion, sir?
Yep. And that is a motion. Right now, you're second?
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved.